Awesome. Good evening fellow commissioners, hello Portland and welcome everyone to the ninth meeting of the independent district commission. Today is Wednesday, August 2nd, we will be meeting from six to nine P M virtually via Zoom and in person from the Portland building. Thank you everyone for making time to be here this evening. Before handing things over to city staff to go over our hybrid meeting logistics. Want to take a quick moment to officially welcome to our meeting tonight Katie Guevara's. Katie is a summer fellow from Portland State who is interning with the IDC this summer. And they've been supporting our hearings as well as the development of the public comment analysis. So some folks might have already had the chance to meet Katie, but if not, just wanted to share a warm welcome and appreciation for all you're doing to support us this summer. So welcome Katie. And with that, I will hand it over to the city staff to go over our hybrid meeting logistics.
Thank you. Okay, so for everyone this meeting is being recorded and we'll post a copy of the recording on the independent district commission's website. Under past events and meetings. Tonight we have closed captioning in American Sign Language available as well as Spanish interpretation. You can access any of that on your Zoom panel on the bottom right. Commissioners, this is a reminder if you have a computer with you to change your chat setting to everyone. So folks listening along can see along with the conversation in the chat. And then lastly, community members, today we have the Q and A feature available. So you can, as, as we are going through a meeting, if you have questions or thoughts, you can put them there. We might not be able to respond to questions of the chat during the meeting, but they will be part of the public record. And if you have any additional questions, please feel free to email districtcommission@portlandoregon.com. And that's it with new logistics.
Awesome, thank you Sophia. So for today, we have a slight change to the order of our agenda. We will begin as usual with welcome and commission business. Then we'll spend some time going over our proposed path forward as well as our decision making roadmap for our August meetings. From there, we will move into a recap and synthesis of the public input that we've received to date. All the commissioners have received a report of the public comments received in this most recent public comment period. Along with all the other public comments and attachments that were submitted alongside those. Following that discussion, we will have eighty minutes for everyone to share their takeaways from the public inputs, both the hearings and the public comment. And then we'll have a focused discussion on the areas of agreement as well as areas for further discussion. And we will end the night with outlining of our next steps. Are there any questions on the agenda before I hand it over to our facilitator? Hearing none, over to you Autumn.
Thank you Commissioner. So we're just going to take care of a little bit of commission business before jumping into our full meeting. We have one unexcused, or sorry, one excused absence today, and that's Commissioner Chisholm. And we had, we have two sets of minutes to vote on, approve and to review and vote on for approval. Just due to kind of an administrative backlog and we got crunched up there right at the end. So we're going to start with the minutes for May seventeenth and then we'll move to those for May thirty first. So are there any proposed revisions to the May seventeenth minutes? I know that there may be one set out there, Commissioner Fleischman.
My, my revisions concern May thirty first, so I'm fine with the seventeen.
On the seventeenth, is there any opposition to approving the minutes as they stand? Saying none, those are approved, so we'll move to the minutes from May thirty first. Okay, are there any proposed revisions for those? And Commissioner Fleischman.
And, and I'm just at the request of the facilitator, I'm, I'm stating these have already passed them along in writing. And I think they, they fall into the category of editorial revisions. However, since they are not revised in the minutes, I thought I'd, I'd review those with you so, so that you know what the suggestions are. In the minutes on page two, Montevilla is spelled Montville. That's an M O N T E V I L L E, which I'm sure may be a place in France. But, but I think Montevilla is the preferred spelling, so I provided that, that preferred spelling. And I'm sure it'll show up in the amended minutes if, if approved. And the second is on page four. There's a sentence where there's, where there's probably one reference to east and west that needs to be changed. It's, it's in the sentence where Commissioner Chisholm stated by combining the renter centric areas on the east side with the renter centric areas on the east. Made for a common community of interest. And I, I believe one of those ought to be west and one of those ought to be east. Not sure what the, how, what the original order was, but just so that it reflects and is accurate. One of those is east and one of those is, is west. I'm sorry, Commissioner Chisholm is not with us today to kind of clarify that intent, but I'm sure it can get worked out. That's, so again, those are two minor revisions, but we've been really good about maintaining the accuracy of our minutes and just wanted to make those contributions. So nothing substantive.
Much appreciated Commissioner. Are there any other proposed revisions to the minute? And because neither of those is particularly substantive, taking issue with the hard content pending those revisions are the minute, is there any opposition to approving them? As with those revisions? Saying none, those are approved as well. And I'm going to pass the mic back to Co-Chair Laurenti.
So thank you Autumn, next slide please. Thank you. So to get us started this evening, we wanted, we wanted to take a moment to remind folks of our work plan and timeline to date. So as a reminder, on June first, we released the draft district plan for community input and the public hearings. The draft district plan included three draft maps released to solicit community input and reactions. In July, we hosted nine public hearings, eight in person, one virtual and heard from hundreds of Portlanders. The official public comment period on our plan closed on July twenty second, which brings us to today. The focus of the month of August is to deliberate on the input we've received, refine our map options and vote on a final district plan. So we have four meetings, including today, to do that work, to engage as a group, to refine our map options and adopt the best possible district plan for our city. I have every confidence that we will meet this mandate given to us by Portlanders. And really come around a district plan that our city needs and that communities deserve and that we as a commission can, can be proud of. And I just want to state upfront that I am committed to doing that work alongside all of you. So just want to say that we are close to seeing this task through. And I want to take this moment to just thank our fellow commissioners as well as the city's transition team. And for all the, just the time and energy and capacity that has been put into this work. And I also want to share a thank you to every Portlander that made time to join our public hearings. Who took time to submit a map or share a comment and welcomed us to your meetings and your spaces to talk about this, this work. Your, your voice and your advocacy has brought us to this critical point and I just want to thank you for your engagement and your feedback. And with that, I want to hand it over to Co-Chair Judd to present our proposed path forward.
Cool. So so here is a list of kind of the, how we want to receive for each one of the meetings that we have for the rest of the month. There are a key sets of questions and decisions that we need to make. These are progressive and so starting with tonight where we are basically getting everybody aligned. From what everyone has heard through the community engagement. And setting the path for any reiterations of maps that need to be constructed. And then in our next upcoming meeting, subsequent meeting, want to be able to review those revisions and see how comfortable we are. We're going to talk a little bit in terms of like, what are the different types of voting or straw polls that we'll be able to take to make sure that we're bringing everyone along together and that we're doing it in a progressive way and a transparent way. But we also don't want to inadvertently trigger a vote when not necessary. By the time we get to the, the August night meeting, as I said, we want to be able to sort of have whatever substantial changes that we've talked about in this meeting sort of aggregated into revised maps. And from that point forward, we want to be able to sort of continue to build not just on the creation of the maps, but also any supplementary supplement documents that we want to go along with the maps as well. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. A lot of this, a lot of the, the, this, the supplemental pieces is informed by things that we heard in community engagement sessions and public comment, frequently asked questions that we wanted to be able to address. As well as we got a lot of feedback in terms of like, what was our rationale as we made decisions? We want to be as, as transparent as possible. And in addition, I think that all of us who were attended community engagements realize that, you know, like anything, this process was not perfect and we do definitely want to leave some recommendations for subsequent commissions. So that they can continue to progress this in a manner that really appreciates the citizens of Portland. And so with that, it's in terms of like that, the supplemental information. Again, there are two distinctions here. One is there's those frequently asked questions which arise from community engagement and, and public comments that we have that we want to be able to answer. We want to be able to build that, begin to building that, that, those questions with you later on this evening. And then the, the quote unquote fact sheet, which is, which is basically a rationale, a set of information that would go along with, that helps, helps us explain to city council as well as to the citizens of Portland. The data that we considered, the rationale that came from that data set and also the public comments. And embalancing it against the, the values that we got collectively from the, the voter requirements as well as values that were reinforced or uplifted from community engagements. Any questions? Excellent.
Commissioner Fleischman, any questions?
Commissioner Fleischman.
Yeah, thanks Commissioner Judd. I have two questions and for the first one apologies from, from jumping ahead. Is, I think in one-on-one and debrief meetings with commissioners, you and Commissioner Laurenti mentioned that there might be a second work group working on a drafting some of these documents. And, and I don't, I, it's hinted at, but I don't see it laid out here. And if that's the case, also what's, what would be the role of staff in doing this? And then the complimentary question is, once we are completed, will, will there be legal, a legal review by staff of the city to make sure that we have met our legal duty?
So first of all, you're a great plant, I do appreciate you, your five dollars is in the mail. And so in terms of the next steps around the fact sheet and the FAQ in the fact sheet. It will be like with the, sorry, I mean, take two steps back. They're basically going to be opportunities for two delegations. One delegation will be for folks to work on the revisions that get articulated in this particular meeting. And then the other delegation will be basically commissioners volunteering to be sort of editors in chiefs of these themes that emerge from our discussion this evening in terms of what those frequently asked questions are and then those rationales. And so as Commissioner Fleischman alluded to, at the bottom of this slide, you see a couple of those themes already. So community engagement and reflective of disenfranchised voices. So a common theme that we all heard was actually the, the core of what our work is about, which is infranchising voters. Equitable representation. And so what does community engagement look like? And so in order to achieve that, I think we're going to discuss this a little bit. Obviously, when we're talking about these maps and certain aspects of them, but we get a lot of feedback from community members in terms of how are we reaching the, 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 those, those of us who are disenfranchised, the homelessness, the homelessness. Folks who don't traditionally participate in civic engagement. We heard a lot about being able to remove those barriers for those members to participate. And so being able to respond to that, I think is, I think we all think that that's responsibility of the IDC to kind of do that. There was a question of around, this, again, in terms of equity. If the city has assets, what does it look like for it to be equitably shared or equitably managed? So that all districts do benefit even if some assets are sitting in one particular district. And so, and this whole notion of asset packing. And so we would like to have comments and reflections on that presented as well. The role and impact of neighborhood organizations, this was key. A lot of the community engagement folks that we heard from were either members of neighborhood associations or organizations or representing them. And so there were some questions around what does the moving to four districts? What does that do to the, the legacy organizations? What happens to them? And so I think again, there's going to be, there's need to explain that and what we found out through our research. And then again, one of the, the, one of, one of the key questions that we were asked was how long do these current maps persist? What opportunities will be made to accommodate population changes? And so again, even though I think every commissioner understands what those obligations are, we do owe that to the public to have a clear statement presented along with the final version of maps. So thank you Commissioner Fleischman for giving me the opportunity to just give a little prelude of what we're going to talk about later in the evening.
Commissioner Fleischman, I can answer your second question about legal review. So we are working closely with our city attorney. Came at the beginning of our meeting, my, I routinely check in with her and update her on her work. And I will be inviting her to join our last meetings, especially as we're kind of wrapping up our work here.
Are there any other questions, concerns around the proposal in that? And we're going to actually, so we're going to talk about voting and the mechanisms for voting and decision makings that, that the co-chairs have proposed. We use and also that are in the bylaws and just having an approach. And then once we do that overview, I'll kind of revisit back and then see if there, if the group is feeling pretty good with this, this general approach. If there's some revisions that you want to discuss. So we'll move to the voting overview. Thank you if you can, and we'll circle back. So this slide is laying out on the left side, the, the tenants that are, that are in the bylaws, the kind of more formal mechanisms around using modified consensus for a process decision and ultimately the final vote that you'll need to take. So just as a reminder, for a typical kind of regular decisions that we make during meetings like establishing committees or agreeing on approaches, narrowing maps, that still will require a simple majority of the commission if we do formally. That of course uses modified consensus where, you know, we look for any opposition and if there is any, we move to a roll call vote. And that just requires a simple majority of fifty percent plus one. And of course, you have to be present to vote, so you can't vote in absentia or through proxy. And so, but the final decisions, there'll be two, up to two votes on plans in the month of August with the earliest vote allowed occurring on August sixteenth. If, if the group wants to move to a vote then. That's what, that's, that would be called formally adopting a district plan. We, from a legal perspective, we've been advised to focus on being very clear about what plan we're, we're actually voting on. And if there were a final vote, eliminating any, any other maps from contention, just to be very, very clear on what the formal nature of the vote is. So of course, as usual, need a simple majority of the commission to form a quorum, but that is going to require a majority, a super majority vote of nine or more affirmative votes in favor of a plan. We can still use modified consensus to be able to assess if there's opposition. And if there is, move to a roll call vote, or if there's not, we still will need to do a roll call vote for the minutes. So those are kind of like, you, you're used to at least that first version of the voting, the second is similar, but does require that super majority. More informally though, we have a few different options that we can use to help move the process along and be very clear around what the commission is doing and have focus in on these maps, especially in this final several weeks. So with the co-chairs, we've identified straw polls. So these could be less formal kind of ways for us to gauge interest in focusing on the specific elements of maps. For instance, interest like getting temperature checks and kind of where we're going. We can have as many of these as we'd like in order to get clear and on the same page. For those, we would use a simple raise of the hand function. And if you're in the room, like I know that we have, I believe, two commissioners who are not showing up on the screen, Commissioner Siegel today and Commissioner Ben Sibley Robbins. A, a raise of the hand also can just help us get a temperature check. I would pose the question and then see how you're feeling. We would actually, in order to move to a formal vote on the plan, the way that would work is we would need a formal motion for a vote on the process itself and the adoption of a plan. Then we would take a simple, a simple majority vote process decision on whether you'd like to actually move forward. Right, that's the trigger. Again, that cannot happen before August sixteenth. And that would require a second. From there, we would then vote on the affirmative, affirmative yea or nay or abstent or abstain for the mapping consideration. We walk through the roll call vote again, again, that's a formal mechanism and that can happen even when we have regular formal, regular process decisions as well. And just to reiterate, eliminating maps as we go will just help keep everyone clear on what's under considered, what's actively under consideration. And so if, as a process, if we were to focus on narrowing and you really don't think there's a fit for a map, you can make a motion to eliminate that map. All right. So that's a bit of a review as well as an added proposal of you incorporate the straw poll, the straw poll element. And of course, the more formal nature when it comes to really identifying which map we would like to vote on. Between this and the general process slide that Commissioner Judd, Co-Chair Judd walked through. Is there, are there any questions? Let's start there. Are there any proposed revisions in terms of the process or any requests for additions? Anything of that nature? And Diana, do you mind going back to the last slide? Please. Just so folks have that up. So just to recap, August seventh, second, that's today, we're going to focus on really getting in alignment, doing some table setting and just figuring out where we all are. Next week, either the Monday and Tuesday will have workgroup meetings that will focus on mapping and they'll basically use every, all the kind of inputs that we've had over the last months, several months actually, plus many of the guidance and decision points that we agree on today to really inform that work. Come to the August ninth meeting prepared to present on proposed map formats. And then really looking for that alignment. And so that's a really refinement. That's, that's intended to be more of a refinement kind of process, including eliminating maps or making any revisions in real time. Moving on into the sixteen, doing more like really final refinement. And if you're ready, focusing on documenting the process again, but then taking that first vote if you're ready. And if you are, or if you need, if you're not, and or if you need a second vote, we'll focus on the August twenty first meeting to do that vote. And of course, walk through that process of developing those public facing documents that help bring more context to the process and really elucidate your thinking in terms of the frequently asked questions, but also many of the fact sheets that can help Portlanders really understand the context and label. All right. So if there's still no opposition to this process, we'll treat this as adopted for now and we can always revisit if you're kind of as a group feeling differently. Okay. Commissioner Laurenti.
Thank you Autumn. So in a moment, I am going to hand things over to Katie to speak to the public comment analysis. But first I wanted to highlight a few stats from the most recent public comment period. So as of July twenty fourth, we have almost four hundred and fifty people signed up to receive emails from the IDC. We've received almost a thousand public comments. We have held twelve and a half hours of public testimony opportunities and have had sixty-three conversations or briefings. Commissioners have had sixty-three conversations or briefings with different folks across the city. So I want to thank commissioners for doing that work to track our engagement in those conversations with community members. Also, since releasing the draft district plan on June first, the IDC has received approximately twenty-three new map submissions, eighteen of which follow the same visual themes as the draft maps released to the public prior to our public hearings. So with that, I will hand things over to Katie to talk through our public comment analysis.
All right. Well, thank you Commissioner Laurenti for grounding us in the IDC community engagement efforts and also the warm welcome at the beginning. Hi everyone, I'm looking forward to diving into the public comments that we've received. So to, this is just going to be a subsection of the public comments. What Commissioner Laurenti went over was all of the public ways of engagement and this is really going to dive into the public comments we received from June first through July twenty second. So this does not include the sixty-three conversations and briefings that the commissioners you all have had. What this does include are the eight in-person and one virtual public hearings that three hundred and ninety-seven participants attended. In addition to the hearings, a public comment was collected through an online survey, a phone line, emails and written testimonies. So from all of these different places, the IDC received eight hundred and sixteen public comments, which is wonderful. So we're gonna dive into what these, what we heard from them. All the information that we'll go over is also in the report that Sophia sent out to commissioners last week. So I think Commissioner Judd did a good job prefacing this, but the IDC worked really hard to hear from a lot of community members. And we know that historically, people who engage in government processes and civic engagement process like this are just a subsection of the larger Portland community. So therefore, this analysis of public comment should not be used to represent all Portland voices, all Portland priorities. I think this goes without saying for, for this, for this group and just want to ground us in the subsection of voices that we're hearing from. So to do this, the only demographic data that we collected from the public commenters are zip code. But it does provide a general picture of where comments are coming from and the level of engagement in the distinct areas around Portland. So we have So we have, um, we have, uh, zip codes for seventy-eight percent of the comments that came in. Um, so, and then we've compared it to the Portland population. Um, and that's the table that you all can see. And, and so what we know is that there is an over-representation of southeast Portlanders' voices in the public comments. And there is, um, an under-representation of East Portland, um, community voices within this, this feedback. So it's important to hold this, um, when we're looking at general themes and the, um, reference map selections. Um, but when possible throughout the, the report and, um, the next couple of slides, we try to disaggregate the data by location so we can better understand some of these place-based priorities. Um, so with that, let's go to the next slide to look at, um, the summary of types of comments we received. So here's a high-level summary of the different, um, types of feedback from the eight hundred and sixteen comments. The top type, the top type of feedback was voting for one of the three reference maps. That include Alder, Map and Cedar. Um, some of these comments elaborated on why and, um, a lengthy rationale, and then others simply stated their preference. So from the ninety-one percent of commenters who voted for a map, um, Alder was the most preferred with eleven more votes than the Maple Map and Cedar was, um, had the least support. Um, and we're going to go much more into detail about these three maps later. Um, the second type of data was comments around data sets or priorities to inform district boundaries. Um, so, so these, um, uh, these came in, were coded, um, based on themes that we were seeing throughout the, um, all of the comments. And, um, I'm not going to go into too much detail about these specifically because they're used, um, to disaggregate data throughout the analysis. Um, but I can circle back later if there are questions about these specific ones. Um, so the, then we had, um, thirty-eight, about thirty-nine percent of the commenters shared a desire to keep their specific neighborhood intact. So these were comments that were calling out, um, and speaking to a specific neighborhood that was being impacted by one of the maps, um, or district boundaries. Um, and then, um, about seventeen percent of commenters, um, proposed alternative district boundaries. Some of these key themes that we heard from this seventeen percent of the comments, um, were around protecting specific neighborhoods again. Um, uh, three point five percent of the public commenters, which is about twenty-nine people, expressed a, a desire to have a stronger, um, boundary with the Willamette River and not incorporate any east side, uh, communities into the west side district. On the other hand, a different twenty-nine commenters expressed a desire to see, um, the, a district map that breaks up the west side district, um, and, um, combine west and east side, uh, um, of the river, uh, communities together in a district. Um, these were motivated to break up power, wealth, asset packing, um, in the west side of the district. So these were some of the comments we heard in alternative district boundaries. And the last was around eleven point seven percent noted that they didn't support any of the reference maps. So in the next slide, we're going to look at, um, the general themes that we heard. So the top eight themes that were presented, um, in the content analysis, um, were, um, again, th- these are, um, representative of everyone. So keeping in mind who we heard from more and who we didn't hear from. Um, and the top theme was, um, sharing their concern around dividing communities and the potential for certain neighborhoods to be disenfranchised based on district boundaries. Uh, a lot of the comments emphasized the need for equitable representation of systemically marginalized populations and also fair distribution of city assets between each district. That was, um, number one concern in all the comments. Um, the second was around preserving neighborhood boundaries. Um, this was a top priority in, um, talking about each of the three draft maps. This was also, um, a priority in the general themes that came out. Um, the, a third theme was, um, the importance of bal- balancing affluent and lower income areas to ensure fair representation, avoiding wealth concentration and protecting against gerrymandering and redlining. Um, another theme was, um, a pretty consistent desire to ensure that renters retained a voice and representation within districts. However, there was differing opinions on if this should be done by concentrating renters or dispersing and balancing renters within each district. The, the main concern around consolidating renters was that east side and rest, west side renters, um, east side renters will be disenfranchised, um, if, uh, consumed by a west side district because of demographic and housing quality differences between, um, across the river. Um, another of the priorities was around transit corridors. There was also some mixed feedback on whether these should divide districts or be intentionally centered within districts to promote more cohesive development and coordination around these corridors. Folks in favor of using transportation corridors to, as district boundaries, recognized that, um, these could re- resulted very clear, um, distinguished districts that can increase voter turnout, especially in younger populations that are less attached to neighborhood boundaries. Um, and folks in favor also, um, talked about how that, uh, better promotes alternative modes of transportation. Um, folks that disagree, um, note that transit corridors divide communities through physical barriers and policy disparities that occur on either side of transit corridors. Um, folks were also concerned that it weakens, um, active transportation advocacy opportunities, especially regarding safe crossings. Um, one thing to note is the scale of the transit barrier seemed to influence people's critique. For example, the Willamette River, the I two oh five, the eighty-four were less questioned in public comments than Sandy Boulevard or Twelfth Street, um, as, as district boundaries. So second to, or third to last is, um, many residents appreciated the commissioner's respect um, of the natural boundary of the Willamette River, um, that separates the east and west side of the river. They believed that this, um, natural boundary aligns with the city's geography and historical context and, um, ignoring it within districts would, um, ignore a very fit, uh, core part of the, the city's, um, um, geography. Um, the, the second to last, uh, general theme was that many public comments reflected a desire for collaboration among the new city councilors. Um, some comments advocated for strategic district boundaries that would allow multiple councilors, um, to work together on complex issues like environmental stewardship of the Willamette River or a central city downtown revitalization. Um, other comments noted that the division between east and west perpetuates a division of the city and there could be an opportunity for this political cooperation to unite historical divisions. Um, and so again, there, there is lack of a consensus of how, but a strong desire for these new, um, districts to promote collaboration. Um, finally, there were a few comments throughout the, um, all of the, the public comments that really urged the IDC to make the ultimate decision for the district maps rather than allowing the city council to make the final decision. Um, I think a lot of folks heard this throughout the, um, the public hearings especially, but, um, folks are appreciative of how thoughtful this group is and, um, urge the commissioners to, um, make a final decision. So now that we, um, have an understanding of general themes of the public comments, the next two slides are going to break down community-specific considerations, um, focusing on the central east side, um, inner southeast, north Portland and east Portland communities. West Portland communities, um, did not note, um, did not have very strong community-specific considerations. Um, so they, um, aren't captured in this specific component, but are, their priorities are captured in other parts of the analysis. Um, so apologies for the very text-heavy slide, but, um, so these, uh, community-specific considerations are collected from comments in those area codes or otherwise noted. Um, and this aims to give space to each community's priorities, breaking apart these general themes, um, that can be dominated by overrepresented voices. Um, so starting with the central east side, um, we had there, the specific com- um, comments around the central east side and the, um, deeper seat southeast, Sellwood, Eastmoreland neighborhood specifically, were really in reference to, um, the maps where they were, um, combined with the west district. So the, the support for, um, the central east side joining the west side district, um, ranged from comments around, um, similarities of land use needs, um, concentrating renter population and that there are significant transportation opportunities across the river in the central east side. Um, there was also a theme around creating a unified central district and how important that is, um, for, uh, a city councilors to focus, um, on the specific needs of creating, uh, a central Portland and having that not just be on the west side. Some other concerns, um, were around protecting inner southeast neighborhoods like Kearns, Buckman, Husbard, Abernathy, um, and, uh, and these communities who have very little connection to the actual Willamette River. Um, there are limited access points. And so the, um, uh, the stewardship of the river within their district seemed, um, like a unnatural common interest. Um, some of the other concerns were around balancing socioeconomic demographics, promoting racial and ethnic equity and protect, protecting low-income renter representation in each district if the central east side is consolidated with the west side district. Um, so for the Sellwood, Eastmoreland, um, uh, residents, the folks who supported, um, these groupings talked about having similar socioeconomic, um, and racial, ethnic demographics, um, on both sides of the river in those areas. Um, and then also talked about the similarities in land use and infrastructure needs, um, noting that the, the neighborhood, um, uh, geography, as well as both having liberal arts colleges are, are similar, um, uh, development needs and considerations. So some of the concerns, um, were around the impacts for the east side neighborhood associations and neighborhood coalitions that would be broken apart within, if the Sellwood, Eastmoreland, um, neighborhoods were consolidated. Um, there were also, um, a lot of concerns around the personal relationships and community ties with neighboring Woodstock and Reed communities. Um, this was a, a strong, um, concern throughout the comments. Um, there was, there's also, um, concern that these communities would have limited representation within the west side district. Um, there was also, um, a topic around, um, a lack of transportation and connectivity between, um, these neighborhoods. And so, um, there noted that, um, the, the few crossings were rarely used by residents and were used by commuters, um, and were not, um, did not feel like connectivity between the, these two neighboring, um, communities. Um, and finally, was a concern around consolidating the assets into the west side. Um, so on the next slide, yes.
Katie, actually, sorry, I know I asked folks to hold, uh, questions, but there is one, just on what you just said, there's one in the comments from Commissioner Monhavas. Just as confirmation, did you say the support for integration of the central east side came from folks outside of that area?
So, um, what we're seeing is the support for like the central east side, those are themes that came from residents within southeast. Those are zip codes, um, and residents from those impacted areas.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, yeah, and then the same will be true for the next slide as well. Um, that these are themes, um, for the east and north Portland district residents. Um, so for the east Portland district, um, remember this is, uh, four point nine percent of the comments. So this is forty people. Um, so the greatest, uh, priorities articulated by this limited number of east Portland residents are to preserve existing neighborhood boundaries and prioritize racial and ethnic equity. Um, there was a common theme of appreciation, um, to keep east Portland as a unified district that increases their representation in a city, um, council. There was a desire to see city assets distributed through all four districts. Um, and finally, there was generally support around using transportation corridors as the east Portland bound, uh, district boundary, um, with its, its neighboring districts. So for north Portland, um, this is, uh, about hundred and forty-nine commenters. Um, the key priorities articulated by these residents include, um, using neighborhood boundaries instead of existing transportation corridors to separate the north northeast district from the southeast district. This was generally motivated by the desire to keep Rose City Park, Roseway, Hollywood and Montevilla neighborhoods intact. We're using Sandy Boulevard, um, split up many of these communities. There was a general support, um, for recognizing the historical, historic Albina District, um, and maintaining a unified north Portland. And finally, there were five comments from, um, north, northwest Linton and north Portland residents. So this one is the one that deviates, this is also from some northwest folks, um, that suggested incorporating northwest Linton neighborhoods into north Portland district based on similarities between neighborhoods, environmental concerns and land use patterns. So next slide, yeah.
And Katie, do you mind, because, because this feels like a pretty good natural kind of point in terms of the content and the presentation. Do you mind if we pause to ask if there are any questions right now? And then we can also do them at the end too, folks. Uh, Commissioner Balde.
I just had a quick clarifying question. Could you go back to considerations part one? So the slide before this. Um, under Sellwood, Eastmoreland, when you say concerns, the consolidation of assets into the west side district. So that's, because it, that doesn't quite, wha- what do you mean by that? Because I understand the concern for when the central city is all one. I can, I understand the asset packing concern. But what is the concern for grouping with the west side with consolidation of assets? Can you tell me more about that?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the two specifically referenced, um, in this subsection of concerns was around, um, higher socioeconomic, uh, neighborhoods and the liberal arts college as, um, two assets that the Sellwood, Eastmoreland communities represent that, um, from their community, from residents' perspective, um, are assets of the east side and should remain on the east side and, um, don't want to see them go into the west side, uh, package of assets.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, good question.
Autumn, it's Sharon.
That's it, okay. Commissioner Sickle-Robins.
So I, I had a clarification too I wanted because, um, I was under the impression that a lot of the support between the two, um, options came from the opposite, uh, side. So Sellwood, Eastmoreland folks supported the Maple Map or the Cedar Map. And people in the central east side supported the Alder Map because they basically just took their neighborhoods off the table for the crossover. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, fifty-six percent of the people who supported Maple Map specifically said that they were only supporting it to keep Sellwood, Eastmoreland neighborhoods on the east side district. Um, that's a, that's, that's a large number. Um, and so we, we will get into those numbers, um, with, um, when we look at the map specifically, um, that is to say that there are some folks in the central east side that conceive themselves in a similar, um, patterns and ways of going about the city and going out in downtown and that central east side. And so the, the comments are, are limited. I, I have the statistics, I didn't put them up because, um, the division between the zip codes between the southeast and the central east are a little bit blurrier. Um, and so it is not as clear lines, um, of where these comments are coming from, but more general. Um, but I can say, I, I have some of the, the statistics. So, um, is there like one that we want to call out?
Right.
So I, I could say like. Any other questions?
Well, Commissioner Monhavas.
Yeah, and I just want to build up a point as a request, maybe for future analysis. I think you were just about to get into this, so that's why I asked my question. So that's why I asked my question. Cause I I remember that as well, like folks saying I support. That, you know, map because it doesn't touch me. And so that's why I wanted to clarify which zip codes were drawing support from for each of these. Categories, but I do think. In a future analysis, and it sounds like you probably have a state, it just needs to be shown in a different way, like showing those zip codes. And where support is coming from as we're looking at each map, not necessarily in the. These slides because they're just categorized in general themes. I think would be really valuable information just to pull together. I'm not sure if we need to like go over it in the future, but it just might be something to have at our fingertips in the future.
So I think what you're asking for is potentially in the public comment report for each map. There's a breakdown of. Presented by. Like zip codes by the North Portland Southeast, East Portland. There's the percentage of support for each map. And the percentage of opposition for each map. They are by the groupings, the place based groupings like Northeast, Southeast and not by specific zip codes. But the zip codes used are in the footnote on the first or second page of the report too. So. To to double check that.
The second page.
Thank you. And if that's not what you're looking for, please let me know and. Cause I do want to take notice of that.
Yeah, Commissioner Monhaddas, I don't know if you have thoughts right now, but if you want to follow up.
Yeah, I think it's the. I did see that. I think it's really helpful in terms of like Southeast, East, Northeast. I think. What would might be helpful is the breakdown between Southeast and so so and maybe it's by. District and maybe it's by some sort of visual map. I don't want to give you a ton of work. It's just I think that's the thing that I'm interested in.
I fully agree and. We'll dig into it and happy to. I think there is. Sometimes some of the the zip codes used or comments used are saying, I'm from the Southeast neighborhood, like I'm from Southeast and there was. More than any other district. A self identification of just Southeast in more of the comments and I can still, we can see how much we have. Like how much data we can pull out from that and really get a better sense of like how many do we not know instead of an. What what I felt like was a lot in the data. So but I I hear you and I'm happy to do that.
Just FYI, Katie, already very impressive. And Commissioner Fleschman.
Yes, this is going to follow, I think, on what Autumn just said. Katie, you did a one, you've done a wonderful job, kind of from my experience having attended six of the nine hearings. And heard a lot of the. Comments live. I was really impressed about how you captured it. Both presented it in summary statistics and then kind of have synthesized it. So I wanted to begin by thanking you. For that, I think it's wonderful job and very helpful to us. Something that was in the report that you didn't quite mention. Is. That this was not a vote. You you didn't quite, you you have that in, it states that in the report. So I. I I want to kind of come back to to that theme that this is wonderful input to us, but it's not. It's not determinative in terms of the direction. It gives us a lot of interesting things to think about. And elements to think about, but it doesn't, but as you, as you did say. This is not a representative sample, so we can't infer from that that this is an expression. A representative expression of the public will on this matter, but rather a bunch of insight from. Some very engaged citizens that we can take and weigh as we. Judge what the next appropriate actions are that we take given our responsibilities. But I did want to really thank you for kind of touching on these themes and summarizing it so well.
So much. This has been helpful and. It's been fun.
Are there any other questions before Katie resumes? All right, pleasures.
All right, well, we're gonna jump jump into the specific maps. All right, so. The three reference maps presented, like I said at the beginning, ninety one percent of the commenters voted on a map. This is seven hundred and forty four out of the eight hundred and sixteen comments that we received. And so as we can see, Alder is the most favored. Second to Maple and Cedar is the most opposed reference map with a hundred and seven. Comments explicitly opposing it. And I want to note something about the analysis is that people could oppose multiple maps, but only vote for one preferred. Opposition was not inferred through supporting a different map. It was only coded if people stated it directly in their public comment. And so a lot of the comments were like. Said something like, I support this map because of a rationale that. In context negates a different map, but it was not then specifically said. So the opposition. For the maps is a bit lower than. I think some of the priorities expressed through the public comments. And so I do think it makes it even more meaningful that the Cedar has. Such a high number of opposition compared to its support or compared to the other oppositions. Wanted to bring that context. And we're going to look at each map specifically. So next slide is a summary of the Alder Map. Twenty six point five percent of the commenters supported this map, eight percent specifically opposed it. And six people made suggestions. The the suggestions are still in the report. And won't go over it in the presentation. But the the key themes that were. Highlighted through the Alder Map is that thirteen point seven percent of the. All commenters supported the Alder Map because it aligned with existing neighborhoods, neighborhood boundaries. This is about a hundred and twelve people. And sixty two of the two hundred and sixteen Alder Map supporters, which is about twenty nine percent. Indicated this was their preference solely because the other two maps threatened their specific neighborhoods. So that's exactly what we're touching on and a lot of the questions are around was there was a lot of. Not in my community and maybe in a different one. And the, so the second key theme was socio economic coherence that six point seven percent. Supported the Alder Map because it maintains socio economic coherence within the districts. Specifically pointing out the economic similarities between Selwood, East Moreland and the West Side. And then also because it achieves a balanced distribution of renters and homeowners within each district. The the third highest. Priority discussed or comment about the Alder Map was around assets that four point four percent. Appreciate it because it evenly distributes city assets between districts. And I think this shows how the general data is then different. From those community specific ones because we saw in the other one, a couple of slides before residents. In that the the Selwood East Moreland might think opposite to that some general support. So next slide is the Maple Map, about twenty five percent of all, oh, yes.
Just for clarification. When you're in your slides and you'll listen to it and. Apologies, this is just a clarification question. Is your N representing the sample size or is it representing the account? So for example, we said six point seven and it's five. Is five the six point seven or is six point seven of five?
Five is the six point seven. So a hundred and twelve is the thirteen point seven. Sorry, that was for the neighborhood, the first one.
So it is actually twelve. It equals twelve. And so five. Sample size is twelve.
For that one, I can double check that pretty quickly.
I I think what you're saying is that. Of the sample size, which is a hundred and twelve, six point seven said this, that's six point seven is you're saying.
I'm so sorry. That was, it's in, that that number is in the report, the that's fifty five and that was. Very much an error. I'm sorry. I really appreciate how closely you all look at this. Going to move on to the Maple Map. So the Maple Map, we have twenty five percent of the commenters supported the Maple Map. This is about two hundred and five people, about this is two hundred and five people, eight point three explicitly opposed it. And the key themes that came out of the Maple Map. Is that it continues. That ten point eight, about eleven percent of folks. Supported the Maple Map because it maintained neighborhood boundaries. That said, like I shared the statistic earlier, but fifty six percent of the people who supported the Maple Maps. So a hundred and fifteen out of the two hundred and five people noted they were only supporting it because it kept Selwood and East Moreland Neighborhoods. In the Southeast District or East Side District. So that's, that's over half who are expressing and sharing that priority for neighborhood boundaries that are very. The data is very saturated with their voices. So the second key theme is around central city governance. That nine point six percent of the commenters supported a consolidated central city district. Believing it will lead to effective city governance. Another theme was around rental representation. So one point six percent of the comments opposing the Maple Map were concerned with disenfranchising the renter heavy. East Side District, East Side by combining it with the whole of the west side. So. One note is that one point six percent of commenters sounds rather low. And as many people noted while advocating for a different map. It was because it had better rental representation. So I think this this priority is communicated. Well throughout each of the maps and can be seen. And and the opposition for this or the support for others to show kind of the the gravity of. Its priority throughout all the public comments. Finally, a concern noted with the Maple Map is that it had a greater population deviance than the other two draft maps that were presented. The the final slide. Is around the Cedar Map. So eight point two percent of the commenter supported it, sixty seven people. While thirteen percent, a hundred and seven people explicitly opposed it. So the the main concerns were for how it fragmented the inner Southeast Neighborhoods. That was eight point one percent of the the folks that opposed it. The second highest concern was from three point six percent of the commenters who opposed it because. It had an imbalance between wealthy and lower income neighborhoods. Leading to unequal distribute unequal representation and decision making within the the districts. A a third theme was around transportation connectivity and this one was more mixed. Where two point nine percent of the commenters supported the transportation connectivity that the Cedar Map prioritized. Believing that it aligns with the city's alternative transportation goals and plans. While three point eight were concerned that using transit corridors undermines these. These corridors as unifying community spaces. Many of the commenters proposed instead to center these transit and also natural boundaries within districts to. Continue them as community spaces and also help prioritize development. And then finally, point nine percent of the Cedar Map supporters indicated that the the districts. They appreciated how they were clear and simple boundaries. And this helped believed that it would help. Foster increased voter representation. So that is the high level recap from the public analysis and public comments. We have, I think about until seven twenty five for questions. But I'll turn it back over to Autumn to help facilitate. Thank you all.
Thank you. I think during this section, we're going to take the slides down. And if you'd like us to bring it back up, we can for sure. But I wanted to start with any questions or observations and Commissioner Comor. I see.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? All right. What is not clear, and I don't know where you could put it, is were any of the comments. That were the online comments or the written comments or whatever. In a language not other than English. Did we get any comments? Basically, I'm asking if there were any that were not in English.
No, I don't think we did. Doesn't mean if someone called three one one and then they transcribed it. So when someone calls three one one to share a verbal testimony, they have translators that are that then translate it into our comment form. Online, so we wouldn't.
You wouldn't know.
So, yeah, sure answer, so.
Thank you.
Sophia, would it be pop, do you think we could try to follow up with the three one one folks to see? If they have a record of the original language?
I I can do that, yeah.
We can try to get that. And I should I should have said at the top, we are going to, we'll take a five minute break after this section and then we'll move into a more explicit discussion around. The maps themselves. So just as we're talking about comments and observations, we should try to focus on the public engagement piece if we can. So. Are there any other kind of observations, questions? Commissioner Hanson. And then follow by.
Just another clarification question. The data that we just saw was from the in person. In person public hearings only. I mean, I'm sorry, pardon me. It was from the written public comment only and not from the in person hearings. Is that correct? Or does that include, it includes all of it?
It includes the public hearings, the Zoom and in person, the online comment form, the. Three one one phone line and emails and written testimonies.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
It doesn't include the sixty three briefings that the commissioners you all had with different community members and organizations.
And Katie, it also would not include public comments taken before June first, is that correct? So any any comments that were submitted before the draft maps were released are not included in this analysis. Commissioner Comor.
Thank you. I know we're getting into the weeds on this, but was there an analysis done? By the the in person hearings about where the zip codes are for that. That hearing. One of the things I know is that a lot of the Southeast Portland folks came to more than one hearing. And I think that's commendable, but I also know that. It was. They worked very hard to make sure that their point was taken and I don't have a problem with that, but. I'm a little concerned that we had X number of people from Southeast Portland, but if the same people came to several meetings. Is there a way we can capture that? Thank you.
So. Yes and yes and no. We very diligently made sure that there was no repeating comments throughout the. That were coded or analyzed and to your point exactly, there were folks who. Commented and gave public testimony at at least three of the public hearings. Their testimonies were all counted, even though it was the same. Person. I can. Search by name and. Like see how many times one person was double counted and it was separate testimonies. But I do hear your critique of the larger kind of over representation and saturation of of voices.
I mean, I don't think it's going to make all that much difference, but I I don't think it's something we thought about. And when I saw the same people and I didn't go to every meeting, but I know that Commissioner Judd. And when I saw the same people, and I didn't go to every meeting, but I know that Commissioner Judd, Commissioner Laurenti, and those of you who went to most of the meetings, saw the same people over and over again. That isn't a bad thing because they were very passionate about what they were doing. But I also think that in in saying that there was, you know, ten percent of the west side folks, I don't know how we capture that. And and so that's really what I struggle with in this. This, I think, was an absolutely fabulous effort. We did the very best we could. But we're not still getting people that don't traditionally come up and testify. I just am a little hesitant to say, how can we do better? And maybe it's not us that does better, but maybe the next group that comes, we can provide a roadmap of saying, this is one of the things you need to look for. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Manharaes and Commissioner Vansikar Robbins. I did see your hand.
Great. I just want to say, like, reiterate what was said about what a fabulous job you did in pulling together this presentation and the brief report. I sit on a lot of spaces and go through a lot of data and information that's very clear, concise, and it was a lot of data to sift through and a lot of sort of haphazard information to capture in different ways. So you all did an amazing job. So good job to the team and and thank you for pulling it together and assuming responsive to our request. I want to speak to this piece around the overrepresentation of southeast residents in this particular process. And also just say that my, I would say, main reflection is I'm not actually surprised by that because they were the folks who were most impacted. Like, it doesn't make sense, and I think this actually came up. I went to most of the, I went to all of the southeast ones. I went to the west side one and the downtown one and one of the northeast ones. And I missed the north Portland one and a few others, but my understanding is that there was sort of a drop in participation. And part of that is because folks were saying, well, what am I testifying on? Nobody's changing my situation. So I do think that that's something to consider. When you're, we're thinking about community engagement, making sure that the folks most impacted are involved is really important. And right, and this is why I want to do a little bit of a deeper dive within that. I think that was an important point to say that there are very passionate advocates who were showing up to different meetings. And even in those six meetings, I thought maybe like, you know, repeats of like five people. It wasn't, I don't think it was overtaking some of the spaces. But I do think, and we had brought this up about, or I think even one of the participants brought up the renter voice, for example, right, and saying like, if we have a map that is speaking to renters, we would expect to see renters show up. And when I was digging into the brief, it seemed like we didn't have a lot of renters show up to speak to that. But the folks that we did have, the community alliance attendants and other folks who do represent more SCI, people who represent more disenfranchised communities, are folks who are closest to those communities and their voice does. We should give some weight to that fact that those folks are connected to those communities. So while we're looking at the end, right, and all of the engagement that took place on this, and again, as somebody who likes lives in politics and community engagement, the numbers are pretty high for such a wonky issue. So I'm I'm just really impressed by what was put together, but it isn't representative of the city of Portland. And I think that's just a general issue in politics and engagement and civic engagement, right? We want to see increased engagement. So all that to say, I'm not surprised by the greater number of voices from southeast. The other piece I, you know, I'm reflecting on that I think is important is that for the folks who are engaged, you know, and I've been an interesting sides of this throughout my career. I do want to make sure that we are giving credence to folks who are currently engaged, not penalizing them, right? So like, and this is just like a mental gymnastics I'm even doing with myself. I know that there is a history around neighborhood associations, very familiar with this history across our country and where it comes from and how it could exacerbate inequities. That said, there were a lot of people who showed up because they do feel connected to their neighborhood. And I want to make sure that we honor what people were saying. It was lifted to the top for a reason. Again, these folks are showing up, which is what we're asking them to do to say, you know, what do you want us to preserve? What is the community of interest that you feel connected to? And I just want to make sure that we're giving credence and weight to that. And so that's all I wanted to say, because I do think it could be like, there's just weirdness in how we could feel about it sometimes when we think about whose voices were not at the table. But I do think that there's sort of the the hope, right? And then there's sort of the reality. And I think that part of the hope long term is that more people will feel represented, will feel like, you know, their voice matters in this process and that they can elect somebody who represents their interests. And so I think that this is sort of a starting point to that, but I don't want to penalize the the large number of folks who did come out and wanted to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to what people did share throughout this process.
Thank you, both Commissioner Manharaes and Comor. Commissioner Vansikar Robbins.
Yes, I wanted to echo what everybody has said about the amazing job you did because it was such a great synthesis of so much information, especially for folks who didn't have a chance to go to every hearing or have not read all eight hundred and some of comments. But what I wanted to ask, and maybe I missed it in the report, but one of the things I thought was interesting, given all of the feedback we got about neighborhoods, the importance of neighborhoods or neighborhood associations or coalitions for the neighborhoods or for the business districts, I was really fascinated by how few formal submissions that we got from neighborhoods. Now, there were a couple that I noted that were in the comments that they made at the hearings where they said, I am the president of X neighborhood association and I am here to say this. But in terms of the letters that we got with the formal, I support this or I don't support this, could, did you tab those and was that in the report that there were, you know, nine letters submitted or whatever, out of ninety four neighborhood associations that exist or?
I didn't, but I very much.
I think it'd be interesting thing to include in there because some of them were surprising where those letters came from and they weren't representative of some of the comments we got. They were kind of curveballs, so I just thought that would be interesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleishman.
Just just to add to to that observation, there there were a couple of letters where neighborhood association did not take a position, which is also, I think, notable, even though they might have been an an association, organization in what, you know, for lack of a better term, would be an area that might feel adversely impacted if if that was their interpretation of of kind of the decision-making process. But I would add that in my recollection, we had letters earlier, prior to to June first. And some of those letters, although they're not commenting specifically on the maps, might be worth kind of going back to to see what they said in terms of a general theme or guidance on how how to think about how folks were thinking about drawing maps prior to kind of us presenting three draft maps. Because there might be a little bit of kind of something we can glean and some insight we we might might get from from that. And I know we have all those, so it might be worth taking a look at those also.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. So we blocked off a few more minutes for this section. I do have a list of folks that I haven't heard from recently, so I'm going to do a little roll call. And if you have thoughts, jump in please. Commissioner Saxena, Wise, Siegel, Lumley, Green, Hanson, and Judd. Any thoughts, questions, observations that you wanted to add to this discussion? Commissioner Wise.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I'm thinking about, is it possible? I I mean, just trying to be responsive to the comments that we received. Is it possible to have kind of like that west side district just be west side and not cross over and keep the deviation to five percent or lower or around there? I remember playing with the maps a while ago and found that difficult. But I guess my biggest my biggest question right now is like, how how close can we get to that? Because, I mean, it seems just like from what I, from what I'm getting, it just seems like people don't want that to cross over. So I don't know if that's possible, and I don't know kind of like how close we can get, but I think that's that's what's going on in my brain right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll probably I think we can tackle that. The next discussion is around mapping, map options, map observations. So I think, you know, that's a question on the table. Commissioner Lumley.
Thank you. I also echo the accolades for such excellent reports, such short period of time. It really is amazing analysis. Thank you so much for doing that. In all of the hearings that I was at, even before June first, we heard a lot of input from neighborhood associations and also people who are supporting keeping neighborhood association boundaries whole. So we've heard that throughout during the hearings. I couldn't attend all of them. I only attended four. And I missed the one where it was close to the Jade District. And so I'm curious if there are any comments about that particular community of common interest. And, you know, we did, I think, a pretty good job of of listening to the community and trying to make sure communities' common interests were deeply considered, and we did. So, you know, I I don't want to focus all of our attention on just the comments from the neighborhood associations, but because there were potential comments that we heard, maybe not a lot, but they came from organizations that represent significant community interest. I, you know, it's going to be a hard process, obviously. I seem to be motivating, at least internally in my head, about whatever map we decide on, it it really does need to encourage voter engagement, and I think we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Saxena.
Yeah, no, thanks for that. And I I'm echoing Katie, amazing job. There was a lot to synthesize and organize, and it's, it was just so helpful to get that analysis. I wanted to answer Commissioner Lumley's question because I was at the meeting at Apano, and it really was quite dominated by folks from the inner southeast neighborhoods. So kind of the the same, a lot of the similar comments at that particular meeting that we that we heard at the others as well. So there so I don't want to make assumptions about who didn't show up, but I I get the sense that that, as Commissioner Manharaes was saying, that that was the group of folks who was most energized and feeling most impacted by the the proposed maps that we've put out to the public were were folks who live in in inner southeast. And I'm also, I, Commissioner Manharaes, I so appreciate your comments because I am grappling with similar things around, you know, processes like this engaging the engaged. And when we hear lots of comments from particular communities, how to how to interpret that and how to interpret like who's organized, who is able to organize, who is already engaged? And then just sort of thinking about that. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Siegel, apologies, I missed your hand. Did you have anything to add?
I am standing up.
So, so, and like I said, I missed it.
Yeah, that happens so often. The I I didn't know this was the part of the meeting where we were going to share a couple of quick takeaways, but I've got six bullet points, not five, but six. And that some of them have to do more lessons learned for next time around. Having to do, well, largely because we were so restricted in what we could do within a short amount of time. I was really struck through the hearing process and information sessions, et cetera, that the comments we received had so much to do with threat and perceived threats and the need to protect a neighborhood or et cetera. And that 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 really struck me that I've been, I've been doing this for a long time as well, and it's this kind of an us versus them behavior surprised me, and maybe it shouldn't have, but it did. I think there's confusion over keeping neighborhoods whole. Do they mean neighborhood association boundaries or neighborhood districts, which can comprise of a couple of neighborhoods or more? I know from the very beginning, when I was hearing about and working diligently to in different conversations to keep neighborhoods whole, I was looking at neighborhood association boundaries, not neighborhood district coalitions to confessions. And I think we're seeing some confusion as a result of that. I too felt that input from neighborhood association leadership was sorely lacking. Again, having been part of citywide processes in the past in different locations, that it was just strange. I was really surprised not to have seen that. I think as far as a lesson learned, when we were having some initial conversations about different ways of getting, of hearing from the normally underrepresented, you know, you you can't force people to participate. But you can go out and you can knock indoors and you can go to churches, you can go to social groups, et cetera. And in the future, if we can have increased opportunities out in the neighborhoods to just have these information sessions, if you will, before the rubber really begins hitting the road. Because I think this also got to our, I don't say inability to, but the difficulty we had in ascertaining communities of common interest. We really tried to tease that out, and I think there's a lot of confusion on the part of participants. What do you really mean by that? Maybe we weren't asking the right questions. Maybe it was just the fact that we had not had the opportunity, given the short window of time and the fact that we were limited to eight or nine public hearings as opposed to I don't want to diminish at all the sixty three opportunities where individual or multiple commissioners went out to different groups or subsets or what have you. Those are pretty targeted, and and that was great. The, I do think in ten years hence, not constraining the commission at that time should not be constrained to just having, let's say, eight hearings, but also have a number of those information sessions out in the community, out in the restaurants, out in the churches, out in the schools to help show people how to become involved and also what the heck it is that we're talking about. Hand down.
Just trying to chat, I was like, I was like, I think that's points. Thank you, Commissioner. And just to follow on with that last piece, I know that there's been discussion around having this body, especially once you've completed your work and your prop, your progress and process, being able to document it and make recommendations for the next commission. And so I I believe, Coach Eronte, you mentioned this at the top, but I I just wanted to keep that in your mind, too. The feedback that you'd like to provide staff now, but also as an as a group, you're, you'll have an opportunity to be able to provide those reflections as well when you record out following your decision. So Commissioner Vansikar Robbins.
I just had one short follow on to Commissioner Siegel. One of the things that was a takeaway for me that would be useful going forward is that the constraint of where we had to hold the meetings and that they had to, had, there had to be two in each district, it actually ended up prohibiting us from having those hearings in the neighborhoods that were most affected by the differences in the three maps. And we heard from a lot of folks in Selwood, Eastmoreland, Burns, I mean, Kearns, Buckman and stuff about why weren't there any of our hearings that were in the inner southeast neighborhoods? And it was really the language prohibited us from choosing those, the combination of the Prohibited us from choosing those, the combination of the language in the, in the, um. Reform and how our maps were drawn ended up being. Uh, challenging on that front. So that's something just to have folks consider at the next go-round.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, for the observation. I'm not seeing any other. I always get me, Commissioner Lumley.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I took very seriously the comments that I. That we all got from the neighborhood association, we're trying to keep neighborhood association boundaries. And I think. Um, where our map options are, are being respectful. Uh, when we get the next census. Data, that's around the census data, whoever looks at redistricting may have an even more difficult time. Uh, maintaining district boundaries just because there's going to be smaller tweaks between the districts. And so. Well, I think we're doing a good job. I don't know how long we can hold on to, uh, keeping neighborhood association boundaries whole. As a goal, it'll just be harder moving forward after this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just double checking. Uh, so we are going to move into a mapping discussion, but before we do that, we'll have a five-minute break. So, you know, let's make it five and a half. And I will see you at seven forty. You're not muted.
Autumn P. yours?
Yes.
No? I don't think no one.
Yeah, I can still hear you.
I'm not, this room is new, so I don't really know how to mute it. But yes, I can show you where the.
I could show you my highlighting and underlines. This is good stuff.
I'm so glad.
How we did, it's just an amazing way to catch up. Me, so great.
Thank you.
This is an internship for you?
Fellowship?
Yeah.
Same thing, I think. Yeah, I mean, I'm rocking up my graduate program at PSU. In the environmental policy.
Cool.
Yeah. We're closely with the urban planners that work program. That's great.
There are a lot of graduates from the urban planning program.
Yeah.
A little, I'm driving, I'm moving the car and everything else.
Put up plans.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Right, we're going to start reconvening. Okay. I'll give the, the room a sec, just to get settled.
No, it was on anyway.
And then, thank you, Diana, right on it. Appreciate it. All right, so. We're going to get, we're going to get started on, um, more of a mapping discussion. So while we were really focused on public engagement and the process questions there. And we did start to touch on some observations. Uh, we'd actually like to go around and do more of like a, a round robin. To just like touch on these points to get grounded, knowing that, acknowledging some of you touched on. Some of these elements in the last session, but just to kind of get started. To open it up for your reflections and takeaways around the following questions. So. Based on the public input and let's not just take the last month, but let's take all of it, um, all of our experiences here. So what stood out to you? How has your thinking changed? And so as you kind of came into this process and you started it, um, and especially I'd say having much more feedback in the last month. But also how you're, you've come to decisions and you had thinking, really, how has that evolved over time? Uh, what open questions do you still have? And this can include some of the ones that we talked about in the last section. Um, it may include questions around specific borders or different, uh, populations or communities, potential communities of interest. What kind of questions are still out there for you? And I know that some folks, uh, had made requests around data, but what a day, what additional data do you still, still think is needed? Um, and I think data can include raw information and data, but it can also include analysis as well. Um, information that's been processed and polled. So. Um, I'd like to start there. We will also move on to, just so you know. Uh, we'll also move more into a jamboard session that's going to really focus on narrowing. Uh, the discussion around the maps and different areas of convergence and divergence and our thinking. And Commissioners Judd will be working on, will be kind of framing that activity for us later. Uh, and then one final request. So. I know that many of you will probably want to uplift different thoughts, um, and comments from one another. But if we can, uh, maybe we focus on kind of really honing in on areas that are more additive or, uh. Areas where maybe you disagree, so we can really start to understand the kind of convergence pieces. However, you are more than welcome to use the comments, the comment, uh, function, the chat. To be able to kind of uplift comments and, and really express more like solidarity pieces. So. You don't have to answer every question, but from, from the questions that you see on the screen, we would love to hear your thoughts. And again, we're focusing on maps more specifically now. Would anyone like to kick us off?
Why not?
I think that, uh, let's go with Commissioner Armenta, I think, because I think I heard you verbally.
Oh, that's not me. That was, uh, I am standing up.
Found me again. All right. So we'll start with Commissioner Siegel and then we'll move to Commissioner Saxa.
Briefly and focusing on map, uh, I know I was one of the proponents of Maple. And from a public policy standpoint of, of the hard fought, years-long battles. Uh, around Central City, uh, twenty thirty-five and around the East Portland Plan, East Portland Action Plan, et cetera. Uh, in very important public, uh, processes, a lot of public engagement. Uh, and it's a, it's adopted city policy. Uh, now, they were not part of our, uh, specific criteria. Uh, but one does not, or I did not, you know, feel like it was, one could just ignore such major public policy. In thinking about the future of, of the community. Uh. That being said, and because it wasn't part of our key criteria. Uh. You know, that's, that's not a sword I'm willing to, you know, or the hill I'm not willing to die on, or the sword I'm not willing to plunge into myself, whatever. Uh, if, uh, so in, I. We, we have, we have consultants and, you know, maybe if something could be done in the not. Uh, uh, not too far future where. We could take, let's say, the best of Alder and the best of Maple. Looks like Cedar, uh, isn't going to be coming back to the dance. Uh, and come up with, uh, either an option with a couple of alternative decision packages. Uh, that makes the best of those two maps. Uh, or come up with, you know, a map, uh, that does that for, uh, us to chew on. I kind of like the idea of a, uh, of a map with some decision packages that, uh. Are centered around, uh, a couple of key questions. But, uh, that's my, uh, initial thought on that topic.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner Saxena, followed by Commissioner Monhara.
Yeah, no, I, um, I, I similarly, uh, was thinking about the, um, kind of, I forget what it was called, the Vision. Twenty, uh, thirty plan and also would not like, I'm not, that's not a sort of like a, well, I want to die on either, but, um. There, uh, there were several comments that were very specific to like. Boundaries and I wonder if they were captured anywhere. Like, for example, I remember very specifically. Somebody, um, who came to testify, who lived in the Brooklyn neighborhood, asking for a boundary to be moved about two blocks. Um, because of, you know, just sort of how, and it was a comment related to a community of common interest and just wanting. The map to move a couple of blocks and saying, you know, not a whole lot of folks lived there, but it, you know, connected transit quarters. And I'm wondering if those kinds of comments have been captured, so we can. Consider that kind of feedback around, um, communities of common interest. Um, and then the other thing that I will say, which I found compelling as I was listening to. Comments regarding maps is that it wasn't. Persuasive to me to hear. A lot of comments around, I'm supporting this map because it has the least impact on my particular neighborhood. When it was a lot of, you know, sort of folks saying that similarly. So while I, I want people to be very engaged and I appreciate a lot of. Engagement, um. That struck me, I guess I'll just say it. I'll just say that. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I saw, yes, Katie, did you want to weigh in on the, uh, the comment question, uh, question?
Yes, I do, about the, um, suggestions. So we, we didn't put it into the presentation, but in the report, under. All three maps, there are the comments that made specific suggestions to the three maps. And then also at the very end of the report, there are comments that made suggestions to alternative maps. Um, that capture exactly those, those kind of, um, testimonies that we heard. So they should all be captured. Um, within, within that report.
I believe they fall under the headings, I think it's literally, uh, suggestions for the X map. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Monhara.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the comments that were made, uh, just made right now, because I think, um, I, I will say. Something I was reflecting on during the, the hearings, um, was. The fact that we didn't get a lot of southeast engagement before we created the maps. And I feel like as we were thinking about. The development of each map, we were reliant heavily on, on what we had and what we could find, right, in terms of engagement and people's feedback. And so I think there was a lot of really good effort that went into the development of those draft maps and then seeing sort of the, like. Intense engagement from southeast, like I, you know, I, I think that was, it was interesting. Um, I will say personally, I'll be very honest, I was in the middle of the legislative session and having very difficult time tracking the details of the map making process. But I kept thinking at that time, we need to pull population from west side. So I haven't heard feedback that says that the entire west side needs to be pulled together, but could not. Like find time to actually sit and do that. And even through the public hearing processes, I heard other people say it, it just affirmed my thinking around that. Um, and I think where my thinking has shifted at this point is that. You know, it's a little too late in the process for that. I think it's, you know, I think it would create more confusion to. Start from that place, just because we have received a lot of feedback, um. Around what we've showed folks at this point. And I do think it's really important that we start to get into the mitty gritty, uh, to, um, Lamar's point, the. The, the population deviations and what we can get away to preserve what we want to be able to preserve. And so I, I am of the mind of. Uh, just given what we heard, um, and, you know, again, as somebody who's not necessarily been. On the side of preserving neighborhood association for many reasons, uh, I felt like there was pretty consistent support for the Alder map. Um, and even when we were on the west side, um, in the southwest area. Um, the folks who showed up there, a lot of them spoke to their connection to Selwood. And I thought that was really important feedback as well. I thought that was really interesting. Um, and so I think it would be really valuable to start from a place of Alder. Because from what I heard in the presentations early on in the process from Commissioner Van Sickle Robbins and others who worked really diligently on that was that. They did their best to preserve neighborhood boundaries, um, in how they could, given all the constraints and the criteria and, and everything. Um, that, that needed to be considered. Um, so I think it's. It would be helpful, again, just to, for our own process to start from a place like that. And then to bring in some of the feedback to, uh, Commissioner Siegel's point, some of the good elements from the other map that folks actually did support. Um, and to focus in where we have communities of interest that are actually in conflict. So where we're trying to preserve something, if there's a space where. A neighborhood boundary or some sort of boundary actually competes with another community's boundary. Then we can sort of negotiate that, um, and figure out, you know, as a group, like what we do about that. But I think that will get us out of the place of trying to sift through who was supporting something because they didn't want to, you know, it was like not in my backyard situation. But I think that will get us out of the place of trying to sift through who was supporting something because they didn't want to, you know, it was like not in my backyard situation. Or don't touch my district. Um, I think it would just make it easier for us to start from that place. And I am really excited to get into those details. I think I'm just really appreciative of the staff and everything they did to preserve all of the comments. I will share very specifically because there's the community engagement process and just being a resident of the Rose City Park neighborhood. It's been really interesting because I have a lot of folks who have discovered that I am on this commission. And so I keep getting all of these emails, which is very fun for me. Um, and part of it is, again, I, I think what I, and I said this during, I think, the meeting at SEI. What I really appreciated is every piece of feedback they've offered me has been a proposal for keeping them connected to Hollywood. Or keeping them connected to neighborhoods, other neighborhoods that they actually work closely with, right? Like even. I can get into the weeds of some of the stuff that folks are working on together that is really, I think it's very sweet. So like I. Those are some of the areas where I do want to get into the details of how do we preserve some of those. Pieces. And again, focus in really where there is a conflict and if we need to get more feedback to resolve that, I think that would be helpful. But I think adding more maps is going to be really difficult. I think, again, I'm letting go of my. Own like righteous, like, well, we should have done it this way. And also. I think building something where we're actually building on this common interest theme, I think would be really valuable. So I'm excited for the next things and just appreciative of, of this group's thinking. Because it's, this is a very complex issue and I think everybody's doing an incredible job.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Commissioner Vincent Robinson says her hand up. So we'll start with her, then Commissioner Valdini and Commissioner Flesch. Commissioner Vincent Robinson.
So I, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that really resonated for me. One was just the perception of the West Side of the river. And I, I really got the sense that. The whole West Side of the river wasn't what was being reflected on. It was just downtown and the West Hills. And it was kind of like that was representative of everything on the West Side of the Willamette River, which is very interesting. When you actually look at the data of what the sixty percent of the West Side population that's south of. Downtown four oh five is very different than. What is in that little center strip from, you know, downtown west. And the other thing I thought a lot about was the comments about Linton and St. John's. Because when you, and, and there's no reason that everybody would have spent all the time we've been spending on looking at population. In the city, but the whole top third of the West Side of the Willamette River has sixteen hundred and eleven people who live in it. And, and when you look at Linton, it's a very small population that's eighty percent white. I think four percent Hispanic and St. John's is almost twenty thousand people. St. John's and Cathedral Park, twenty percent Hispanic, sixty percent white. So as people were like just throwing out how similar these two communities are. The data doesn't really support that. Um, and I, I don't think people necessarily have even looked at that. But when you actually look at it, it's, it's very, they're very different. The other thing I still am struggling with, and I know we heard definitively. Or before June first, from the Jade Business Association, I don't remember. What the exact name of it is, but about moving that boundary from Division, which is the bottom line of Montevilla neighborhood. Up to Mill Market. And I noticed in the comments that we got back subsequent to June first, that we had comments from Montevilla. Neighbors and Montevilla Neighborhood Association, that they really didn't like having that. Their neighborhood boundary shifted up from Division higher up. And we heard from people who live actually in that little part of the Montevilla neighborhood. And they were talking about how it was dividing some grade school. Parts of the neighborhood and a park area. And so anyway, I, that's one thing I'd like to talk more about. And learn more about as we're refining the map option for the East District.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Valdini.
Thank you. Um. I think the one thing that I would like to really draw attention to as we begin to consider these maps. And, you know, again, I want to, I want to be very transparent with where I am with this. And I've always been a big fan of Alder. I continue to be a big fan of Alder. That's where I am. But I also really like the idea of revising Alder to reflect some of these community issues. But I wanted to raise a flag of caution about that a bit. It is very important that we don't trim down the East Side block that is currently in part of that West Side District. So much that that East Side voice will go away. So the short version is because it's ten to fifteen percent of the population of that West Side District at this point, as it's drawn. I can guarantee to those communities basically, and, and, you know, we did at the meetings that. Especially because they are so politically engaged, they will have a voice. And I, you know, I live, I live in Sellwood, so I'm guaranteeing to my community that we will have a voice. However, if it's trimmed down to just Sellwood, so let's say you cut off East Moreland. And you leave East Moreland in the Central East District and you put Sellwood into the West Side. Then we no longer can guarantee that there will be that East Side voice in that West Side District. So I want to be very careful that we, because we have to, and I completely agree with Commissioner Wise. It would be awesome if we could just make the West Side its own district. From my drawings, it wasn't possible. It has to cross the river somewhere. If we can make the place where it crosses the river, this big cohesive block, like it is right now with the Sellwood, Morelands and Reed. Then we can guarantee them, you will have a voice in this district. You don't have to worry that they're going to be, you know, you're going to be disenfranchised. And that came up so often at the meetings with different colorful adjectives that they would use to describe their fears. That they would not have a voice in the West Side District. So I just want to say, well, I'm very excited about making changes and, you know, revisions to this. I also want us to think of the benefit to the community on the Southeast Side to keep them as that block. When we're pushing them, when we're combining them with the West and to just be mindful of that as we're switching the lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fleishman.
Yes, I, uh, I, I've been following along with everybody else's comments and I'm very comfortable. In fact, endorse pretty much everything that's been said. I, uh, kind of, I am still going back and forth in my mind with questions regarding whether. A Maple, a map or an Alder map is preferable. Because I still want to sort out a couple of questions regarding the Maple map. And, um, and I, I think I've answered them. In fact, I spent an hour talking. Saying them out loud to somebody today and kind of trying to get their advice on this very issue. But I, I feel comfortable that those are two very good choices and would, uh, would form the bases. For moving forward to a final map. I do have an inclination towards favoring the Alder map. But I did want to lay out kind of what, what I'm going back and forth on around, around the Maple map. In part, it's to echo Commissioner Siegel and Saxena saying. There's some. There, there's some attraction to the idea of having the Central City kind of. In one kind of unified in some way. But I also see that as a potential, and this is my concern, is potential issue of asset packing. And, and I'm, I'm trying to sort that out. So I, I, I'd love help in thinking about that. And the second is, uh, the, um, I, I do believe that there are commonalities in terms of renters. That, that, that span across the river. However, I didn't hear that expressed as a commonality in, in testimony. I heard some folks express that sense of commonality and some folks express just the opposite. So I, I'm not, I, I, I can't sort that out. So those are the two areas that I can't sort out. I think the Alder map offers us kind of a, a way forward. And ironically, one of the things I reflected on in this process is the very fact that. South, that folks from Southeast turned out so strongly speaks to their level of civic engagement. Which gives, you know, gives me a sense that their voice would not be drowned out by anybody. Because, uh, be- because they, they would want to show up and want to express a voice. And want to participate in civic life. So in a sense. Uh, kind of they're showing up through this process, even to say, don't join us with the West is kind of a indicator. That, uh, it's a very active civic life that would continue if we adopted some variant of the Alder.
Thank you, Commissioner. It might be, now might be a good time as Paul's point to just synthesize some of the thoughts and some of the agreements that were in the chat as well. So, so far, we've heard that there is generally interest in. Of the reference maps, right? Starting in forming a base around. Alder among the groups so far, the comments and or Maple with a somewhat of a preference for Alder as a starting point. The, the discussion around Sellwood and East Moreland. Keeping, keeping those two communities together as more of a, a block in order to preserve some of that organizing capacity. And not diluting that vote was important. There were also a lot of thumbs up reactions and there's comments in effect in the chat as well. There is some interest in specific boundaries as, including. Montevilla and just revisiting that, just to make sure and validating some of those borders and. I guess that could also be extended just to validating the borders when it comes to the district kind of bordering Southeast and more of that. It's not central south, I don't, the district in the middle, uh, towards the bottom. But validating, but also just being careful and cautious around those borders too. And then, um, general questions around what does the Central City? What does it potentially mean, right, to have that incorporated? Is that potentially the downside, potentially being asset packing? Um, and really what do, what are the similarities or dissimilarities of renting communities on either side of the river? Okay, so that's kind of about just a synthesis of where we were. Still checking the chat too. Are there other thoughts? Comments to add? Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, I think one in response to the synthesis that you just did, the, the three kind of minute lines that I noticed were Montevilla, which you mentioned. And then also Brooklyn and Linton were the other two that had come up for me in the comments and then also in these. Um, and similarly, just like echoing and really lifting up a lot of, a lot of what other folks have said I really agree with. One other piece that I'm, that I was really sitting with through all the hearings and in these comments. Is just the importance of, well, two things. One, any map is better than no map. And I think one of the best things that we can do, we said this at the beginning, that we all can do is to vote on a final map. This month to really honor the time and effort that everyone has put in and entrusted us with their opinion. Um, and so just like keeping that, keeping that front and center. And then secondly, the importance of language. I think the, the comment came up a handful of times of this language around like dividing and divisions and separating and, and things like that. And that's something I'm also really mindful of. And, you know, if we choose to move forward with the, the Alder map, maybe we rename it the Douglas Farm map. Or something like that. So it's, so people who are, are hearing this aren't thinking like, oh no, that's the one I said I didn't like. And I feel like I'm, I'm not being heard and just being, being kind of really mindful of, of language as we are moving forward. So it's, but I agree that I, I would feel really confident moving forward using the. Herefore known as Alder map as like a baseline template that we can then work from. And also thinking about language in that and just how we're, how we're being mindful of that. And one outstanding question I had, um, that really came up in the Sellwood Neighborhood Association meeting. That I was at was how neighborhood associations might be impacted by these new maps. And Sophia, I believe you sent around a document earlier today that had some information from civic life that I have not had a chance to read. Super close to in detail, but I do know that that was an outstanding question. If we do end up having a final map that does end up, uh, have, having lines that are not in sync with current Neighborhood Association lines. How that might impact those lines in the future.
Thank you. And that actually raised another kind of a thread that was there too, uh, looking at the. Instead of focusing on the division so much of the differences between neighborhoods, also looking at potentially how they may partner or be working together. To form maybe a broader sense of communities of common interest. So I think that's in mind with not focusing on divisions as much as like similarities too. So I did want to do a check to see if there are any thoughts from Commissioner Larente. Commissioner Judd, Lumley, Kimora, Weiss or Green. Commissioner Larente.
Thank you. Um, so I have a couple just general public hearing reflections and then a couple more map specific thoughts. Uh, so I was able to attend online public hearings and just a general takeaway was an appreciation that this is the first time that Portlanders are having a conversation. About city voting districts. I think that's important to underscore that this is the first time we are doing this. So that, you know, that's historic, but it's also fresh and new and, and, and hard. Um, and what I heard of a lot of these hearings is a genuine appreciation for how difficult this work is. I think maybe even more difficult by how much we all care about the city and wanting to do the best possible community engagement and arriving at the best possible. Maps. That's just kind of a general takeaway. Um, next, more specific to mapping, um, I came away with. Thinking that the common draft map themes that we kind of coalesced around are pretty close to the money. So I, I came into the public hearings with a lot of anxiety, but also an open mind, right? I think if we were to hear, if we, we had heard from Portlanders that they wanted us to unanimously, unanimously go back to the drawing board. I was mentally prepared to do that. But both from the public comment and the hearings and just conversations I'm having out on the streets. I do think that a lot of, that, that the draft map themes do capture how most Portlanders intuitively think of the sort of. Districts in our city or the sort of quadrants in our, in our city. And I thought that was important. And I also thought it was telling in the report that most of the newly submitted maps and district were more or less aligned with the draft map themes. Um, and I think that's interesting, given that, you know, it takes considerable amount of time to do a little bit of work in district or in the folks who are, you know. Contributing that time or doing so from that, from that starting point. So I thought that was interesting. Next, oh, actually, yes, more, more on that. There, you know, a lot of the comment we heard was around. With, with districting with the, with the West Side, you know, there was a lot of, I support X map because it, it connects that community and not my community. And the sort of signal that I heard in that was around, you know, I understand why you're districting the West Side in that way. Just don't include me in my community in doing that. So I think I had a lot of questions around how we district the West Side. Is it to make sense to keep, keep that as one district or split as two? I think was a question that had been floating around a lot. And I came out of that understanding that I think our, our general draft map themes are pretty close to how most Portlanders think of the city. Also, I, I was also moved by the comments around encouraging collaboration and unifying Portland. As folks on the commission know, as one of the sort of author. As folks uh on the commission know, as one of the sort of authors of the Cedar map. You know, collaboration was one of the guiding sort of motivations that that guided my thinking in 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 drawing some of these boundaries. I'm thinking them less of boundaries and more as bonds and we put four districts together instead of breaking the city apart. Um I think it is, you know, clear um through the. Uh public hearings and the public comment that the Cedar maps rationale for that, you know, didn't resonate. But um collaboration was uplifted as a priority for Portlanders in this process. So. Um I think that in and of itself is very um great feedback for us, and I am thinking about. How the, you know, Charter Review Commission was very thoughtful about. Creating these ranked choice multi-member districts as a uh sort of tool to encourage that collaboration and that unity. But in this in the context of the maps, I think the conversation around equitable distribution of assets. I think has a more elevated importance to me as a proxy for that sort of collaboration. And um I don't know if this is an appropriate uh, you know, time right now or for maybe your future meeting, but. I am curious how other commissioners would feel about entertaining a motion to. Uh suspend consideration of the Cedar map for the purposes of narrowing down and focusing. On other map options that we have some recommendations uh to to work on. So um those are just some of my general uh takeaways and thoughts and reflections.
Well, I was actually going to ask if there was interest. Just doing more of a kind of an informal check to see if there was interest in eliminating. A cedar map as a reference map. Commissioner, I think. Would you like to make a more formal motion around it?
I I I I make a motion to uh. I guess formally suspend consideration of the Cedar map for the duration of our work.
As a reference map?
As a reference.
Knowing that, because we're using more like the we're probably even done by using more like maps as base maps to work from. Okay. Okay, um is there a second?
A second.
Do you think that was Commissioner Monhadas? Um okay, is there at this point any opposition to. Removing the Cedar map as an active reference map under consideration going forward? Okay, seeing none, that that'll pass. So at this point, then, we'll use, we'll have. I think we're going to continue to call them for now, at least Maple and Alder until. That until you decide otherwise, uh but we'll be working with Alder Maples kind of like. For our discussions going forward are reference maps. So we did have a, so we do have a. A jam board kind of exercise that's a little more focused on mapping specifics. But before we move to that portion of this discussion, I just wanted to see if there are any other reflections. Just around how your thoughts have changed, checking in uh Commissioner Vince of Robbins.
Well, I just wanted to uh follow up on what Commissioner Hanson said about what we got uh from the draft that we got from Civic Life. Just because it it kind of goes to notions of collaboration, because right now there are seven district coalitions. That uh each of that the neighborhood associations feed into. And it's uh my understanding that the thinking right now is that they will reduce those to four. That will match the um the district uh the districts that are in the final map. And that in and of itself is an opportunity for new collaboration. For uh whether it's crossing the river or qua- crossing eighty-four or crossing two oh five and eighty-second. Um there will be new opportunities for neighborhoods to come together and find. Common ground, common purpose, um new new senses of collaboration.
Thank you, Commissioner Vince of Robbins. So uh just checking Sophia, I know that you just got that response back from. Civic life, I think towards the end of today, so I don't think it's on the site yet.
No, but I just. Yeah. I can I can post it really quickly too, so folks in the public or all anyone can have access to.
Okay, and can have a link to it. Um but yes, Commissioner Vince of Robbins, the guidance from Civic Life was that. Uh and I'll just actually drop this portion. In the chat, but.
Clear.
Well, copy paste isn't working from the PDF, so I'll read it out loud and then we'll link to it. Um beginning in the fiscal year, or sorry, currently, the Office of uh Community and Civic Life. Provides funding for seven district offices throughout Portland. Each office provides support and resources to neighborhoods located in their district. Beginning in the year fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Civic life will reduce the number of district offices it funds from seven to four to align with the new district. Boundaries being developed by the IDC. As a result, some neighborhood associations will need to request support and resources from the district office that serves their new district. And then they also referenced that. Again, starting in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Civic Life will reduce the number of district offices, funds from seven to four to align with the new district boundaries. Um they believe uh it is a necessary change as it will ensure that Portland's new counselors will be able to attend district coalition meetings. To hear from and understand the needs of constituents in their district. So that's a memo that was provided based on some of the questions that arose during the public hearings. And that'll be posted. Soon. Commissioner Baldini and then Commissioner Kamora.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, um because this was something that was really important to the Sellwood neighborhood in particular. And a big part of the discussion, this new revised memo, I the first version that I saw was much more restrictive and them saying, you know, the Office of. Community and Civic Life saying, we're going to put these. The new coalitions are going to match the district boundaries. That's it. We're done. This version seems much more flexible, and I wanted to, even though you're going to post it for any community members who are listening, I also wanted to highlight. That they say later in the memo, if the chosen maps voting districts divide neighborhoods, Civic Life will work with impacted neighborhoods to help them decide how they will want to proceed. So while that doesn't explicitly say coalitions, I do want to say I highlight that flexibility and say that. Neighborhoods like Sellwood, like Eastmoreland. If you're not happy with the coalition you're in, it looks like the Office of Civic Life is is more willing to listen and consider and. Showing more flexibility on that front. Um which I was happy to see.
Thank you. That's a very helpful observation. Thank you, Commissioner Diddy. Um Commissioner Kamora and Commissioner Monhadas.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. I want to point out that. Going to a different coalition than the one you're originally assigned to is not unheard of. I think South Southwest Hills. Didn't like the structure of the new southwest groups, so they went over to Northwest Portland. Now, if they're all on the west side, they're going to have to work together. The biggest change is going to be in. The northeast area because you have North Portland. Cent- central northeast neighbors and. Neighbors with um northeast coalition of neighbors. For the, and that's, I think, going to be structurally. Difficult. However, that's not our job, but our job is to to preserve. As best we can. The boundaries that we have, but if there is a uh a methodology for which. A specific neighborhood wants to join a different coalition. That should be available, and there it actually is. Um we've had Pleasant Valley and Lentz move from inner southeast. Out to East Portland. And there was some discussion about. Whether we should include Darlington as well, and they never got our own to voting, so we just didn't take that up. But I think that is. Uh Civic Life has to be kind of open to that, because. You don't really want to not have to deal with dissatisfaction and at the same time. You don't want to pander to it either. So I think that that's the second vision is is much more. Open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Monhadas.
Thanks. Um while we're reflecting on mapping, I was trying to figure out uh when to state this, but um I. I'm thinking about um some of Commissioner Fleishman's comments and also what Commissioner Laurenti elevated around. Collaboration and the equitable distribution of assets, maybe encouraging that or that being part of the theme that we heard. Um and I just want to name a fear I have around packing assets. I don't think we've talked about it explicitly, but. Um I have a real concern about the impact that asset packing could have on. Campaign finance issues as you think about some of these elections and where money is actually moved when you have. Um a lot of folks who have a very um like direct financial interest in a certain district, like I just really worry and I want to. Put it on the table because I'm not sure it's something that everybody's thinking about. But we could end up in a situation if we do pack in all of these assets where we have very expensive elections for one specific district. Um and that having a real impact on how folks in that district feel represented and also just the lopsidedness. So. I I think there's a correlation there. I think um it's something we should consider, and I bring it up because. It puts me, it makes that fear, actually makes it really difficult for me to support some of the elements of the Maple map, and so. I do want to in our path forward, like really discuss that, like to think about like. Some of those different like orientations or I mean, again, we all have our different uh concerns and things that we really want to see, but I think. Grappling with that is going to be important for us to land on a map where we all feel like. It's um something that we could all support. So I just wanted to put that on the table. And also say that I'm completely open to having a conversation around what this looks like. In that area, but that's a fear that I have on the other side of sort of the a- asset packing issue that I do just want to be explicit about.
Uh thank you, Commissioner, and I. I'm doing it from memory, but I think you're right. I don't think that particular aspect has has come up in our discussion so far. Commissioner Lumley.
Um thank you for all the comments. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Um. You know, I've changed my mind several times over the last month, but uh of the two maps that we're still looking at right now, I. Probably should put out there that I'm I'm leaning towards the Alder map. Uh for all of the information and data and testimony that we've received and. I especially appreciated Commissioner Baldini's comments earlier tonight about uh keeping that lower southeast block together with. Um Sellwood and Moreland. I sh- and I I sort of share the. Comments that Commissioner uh Fleishman had about the um about the Maple map and that um. Yeah, I also have some concerns about asset packing and the 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 label that was attached to it as their renters district and. I I don't want to close my mind to that map, but I I would like to have more conversation about it as Commissioner memoir has has. Has uh referenced, but um I don't know if that would change my mind, but I will keep my mind open about it, but at this point I am leaning towards the Alder map.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Weiss.
Uh I'll just say I'll say did it. Um I'm I'm also leaning towards the the Alder map. You know, I I think back to some of the earlier conversations that we had as a commission and. Uh as we were considering, you know, uh adding uh an additional. Criterion around um uh goods and services um in uh in the districts and making sure that those were evenly divided. Uh we opted not to add in the criteria, but as I feel, I just want to remind folks like a lot of the conversation. Was that we would still keep. A lot of that sentiment in our considerations as as we did this work. Um and so I think to be fair to to those sentiments, um I'm mostly leaning towards um Alder.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I think we're about to, we're ready to transition to the jam board exercise, and we should have about. I'm sorry, was there a hand? Sorry, just thought I saw a hand raised. Um and we should have about twenty-five minutes or so. For this session, and I did want to reserve a few minutes at the end just to talk about scheduling. A work group, a potential work group for next week, Monday or Tuesday, so if you can be thinking about. Um interest in joining a mapping work group and availability on either of those days, we'll do that at the end. Commissioner, Coach Joe.
Thank you. Listening to a lot of the the comments uh from commissioners this afternoon, what is this evening, and also um. Listening to and reading through the public comments and engagement. And just to piggyback on what um Commissioner Laurenti said. Uh in terms of the the first time Portland is kind of having this conversation. And what's happening, this does. This is an exercise in trust. Uh and when we look at communities of common interest, what we're really defining is how far out. Uh does a neighbor, a single neighborhood trust this 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 adjacent neighbor? And uh at times, um you know, trust is a stylist through familiarity. Uh trust can also be uh uh destroyed through familiarity and experiences. And in that latter case, uh we do have, it just feels as if uh there's some healing that uh communities uh need to do. Um uh even the stronger strongest voices that we heard uh of dissension and those who uh disagreed uh with the process in general. Um and talking to them, they they basically express um uh, you know, harm. That resulted in a low level of trust um in 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 the work that they see us doing. And so, that being said. Um we've 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 got to sort of build off of trust and 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 extend trust to one another in this process, it's community service. Trust that they've given us their um their best comments, and then also uh be very aware of. Those, as we as we talked about previously, we're not uh engaged in this process and we will will um. Be able to to work on that side again when we start talking about some of the things that we need to do in the future. Uh developing that that those facts she saw that rationale out. For right now, what we wanted to do in terms of trust is talk about where that trust has converged. Where we all feel as if there's a high level of confidence that uh we are in the right direction and. Uh you know, Commissioner Laurenti's um uh step to sort of eliminate uh have folks. Uh consider not no longer consider this the Cedar map uh is one of those things that um is a clear. Level of trust that we feel like we've we've converged enough um to have. Two reference maps left for us. In addition, we want to talk uh sort of uh take all the things we've talked about now, we sort of. We tell our site our our ties and minds in terms of what uh what we've heard, we we reminded each other what we heard. Uh what we've experienced through this process and how we were uh changed by it. And so what we want to do is in this this first exercise. Let's talk about in terms of map features. What are the things that uh have converged to a certain level of trust where we say, okay, this we can call it good? These are things that have other from the beginning of our process to now, uh they have uh stood. And also things that were uh these same themes could be elevated and lifted up, you probably comment as examples. Um and again, this is in terms of map features. Um we also want to talk about where these are, um there isn't a a great level of of trust or where there's divergence at this point. So what map features created the greatest level of tension? And since we now have two reference maps. Um that we can um lean into as as bookends, what are the tensions between these two maps that still persist that we need to resolve? Um and how do we prioritize tho- those so that we could um between now and uh August ninth? Begin to sort of uh uh working and iterating off of those suggested changes. Also, keep in mind, is there any additional data that is needed uh to be considered to help um us make the sort of a a. Another determination or uh a progressive determination in that August ninth meeting? The last swim lane um is around the values and themes. So. Uh again, going back to issue trust, the maps features themselves, we are articulation of lies and um boundaries. But what are the themes that we are working with uh with what? That provides the frame uh and context for these map charts. So, for example, um we've heard a lot about disenfranchisement and. Equally representation. We've heard a lot about um the need to um uh protect neighborhood boundaries. Protect neighborhood boundaries, so these are themes again that we feel like, yes, they have persisted. We need to, they need to be the the some of the guiding principles which the context of drawing features of the map. Exists and then also were there any additional themes? That we picked up or were given as examples in public testimony, so whether it's in the. Community engagement sessions or in public commentary, comments that were submitted. What are additional themes that we wanted to to converge to say, yes, these are all aligned with the context in which. We want to establish these maps. When we talk about the versions and themes, were there community engagements and sentiments? That were conflicted, that that did not, that did not necessarily represent. The best of what it is that we were given as a task and valued, that the community says it values. We've heard, for example, the notion of. Do that to that community, not to my community. So being able to sort of call it out and say that's of. A value that, you know, is that something that we want to uplift or is that something that we we consider and we therefore want to sort of move away from? So I'll stop there, does that make sense in terms of what we're trying to do in the Zambor, really try to put. Thoughtful. To take all the things that we've talked about thus far, put it into the to the Zambor, so that leads us to consolidation of. All the areas where we feel like there's a high level of trust and convergence, and also the areas where there's a level of divergent. A low level of trust so that we can begin to prioritize what our next steps ought to be. Any questions, comments?
Now, Commissioner Jeff. I know that folks commissioners can edit the jam board and so they can, you know. Click and put little post-its on each section, just how I think, would you like folks to take a few minutes to do that?
Yes.
And then come back together and then we'll, yeah, we'll come back together and review the jam board.
Yes, I just, yes.
All right, perfect, so just a little overview, the jam board. There's a link in the chat for for the commissioners. You'll have, there are multiple screens that you can navigate via the top, there's a little right carrot. And that that has a second set of questions. And so there's kind of seven or, sorry, sorry, that there are, yes, seven questions in general. And you can, if you click the little sticky note on the left, there's a toolbar on your left there. And if you click the sticky notes, you can place them and you can type in them, someone's already gone for it, so if you just want to take, let's say. We're still on track, ten minutes, up to ten minutes or so, we'll go off camera. If you're, if you want to come back sooner, that's fine too, and we will reconvene at. Actually, let's take it to eight forty five. And just as a note to the Portland building, we can hear you, so.
Um, Autumn, I'm having trouble accessing that editing function because I'm view only.
You're still, Commissioner Manhata, there's an. Commissioner Manhata, there's a new link in the chat that was sent about three minutes ago, can you try clicking that one instead?
I have no idea, no, they can hear us.
Yeah, I mean, we can still hear you, but.
Can you hear us though?
Did we tell you how awesome you're looking today? I was ready.
Do you just plus one on?
So I thought convergence existed on keeping albina, lower albina in the north northeast district.
I wonder if somebody should mute the Portland building.
Actually, that's a good one, I just can't do it, let me see, Sophia, are you able to do that? Commissioner Limley, if you want the, you know, future director of your technology services over here.
Says North Portland and Northeast Portland contiguous. Which I think is a plus one to keeping North Portland together.
And when you're ready, if you do have your camera off, do you mind turning that back on? Hey. So. What's the thoughts on the jam board? I think. It might be helpful to just, I don't expect you to process all of it all at once, but maybe it's just helpful to look at each slide together. And just do a high level kind of review of some themes that stand out. Thanks Dana, we'll start with the first slide. So if we start with a. Seeing a couple of new convergence, the convergence area, so the questions were. What do the starting map features remain favored from draft maps through community engagement? So for example, and include examples of community engagement. So just maybe synthesize or just to point out certain ones. We had essentially keeping a whole east, one east Portland district as well as keeping North Portland together. Keep establishing continuity between North Portland and Northeast Portland, being able to. Being able to preserve the neighborhoods and so really keep and keeping historic albina and in North Portland district, right? So really big emphasis on contiguous, continuity and really keeping communities together. There's also a thread around. Borders or or features that are really like physical features that are really distinctive, including. The I eighty four and Willamette and that came up with a couple of thoughts too. And there's also an observation that folks in the east, in East Portland generally seem comfortable with the boundary that was laid out. In each of the maps and that was consistent through all of those maps. Okay, and one final one around around keeping communities together, there's preserving common. Preserving communities of common interest for neighborhoods or associations want to work together, so for example, Selwood in Eastmoreland or Rose City in Hollywood. So, just kind of theme, so high level themes, keeping communities together, some of the board, some of the boundaries. Were pretty consistent and that held throughout the process and and that includes the physical. Physical features as well. And there was one no one to, currently assets are skewed to the west side, I don't know how else to juggle that up, the population issue versus the asset. Packing except to use the Alder Maple map and just go for it. If we go to, so I'm just reading a little bit, thank you. Areas of divergence and let me actually pause there. Temperature check, so that seem right, any thoughts or anything to add around areas of convergence? Right. It's better, divergence, so the two questions were what map features. What map features should be prioritized for review and edit? And what map features created the greatest objections, tensions or resistance, so. This will be probably that these would constitute areas that you'd want to focus on probably in terms of refinement, so. Thinking around how to address themes around socioeconomic balance, for instance, the concerns around asset packing. Cat State saying renters on the east and west are different. Thinking about best supporting a central city plan, it's understanding the role of Buckman and Kearns. Would it be part of Maple or in part of Southeast, just really honing in on. That area of Selwood and Buckman. The tension of the, I guess, the sense of being assigned to a Western district. And then also specifically comes to specific boundaries, those boundaries around the Brooklyn, Rose City, Hollywood, Roseway, Montevilla areas, just really honing in. That was a theme from the last discussion as well. And then again, this this question of where to cross, where to cross the Willamette or the sense of being assigned to Western district. And whether or not it's possible, feasible to create a single Western district with a link across the river. One more, one more point for this thinking really critically around what approach best serves renters. And I know that that says Alder or Maple, but we've also talked about just using those as kind of base maps as well, so that's a consideration that you can take into. That's a factor you can take into consideration as you, as someone said, start with Alder or some maple, maple, make relatively small tweaks. That's one approach to doing. From higher, bigger levels around values and high level themes, you started with some of these at the top of the meeting and. Hone them in further, so yes, we asked what values and themes are reinforced and uplifted from draft maps through community engagement? And are there additional values and themes to be uplifted from community engagement comments, so I'll start with the first. Again, the values that were reinforced, keeping boundaries intact as well as fostering. Citywide collaboration or cross-district collaboration, promoting accountability to community voices. Especially those that and understanding. What you heard were voices that were present, but also understanding who wasn't present. And then there was this core around the process being seen as legitimate and that is something that came up in multiple comments throughout the process too. And there were also, there's also feedback as well on how the process could have been. More more proactive in terms of outreach and hearing from others. There were, there were thoughts around change, so even change, even good change necessitates loss. And many people are feeling that loss or have fear around the change itself. And many other people are excited about it too and seeing opportunity and. Another big theme, IDC needs to vote on a map and not send it to the city council. And just from a change perspective, just highlighting and uplifting that one, it's a very natural, it's a very, very natural tendency to fear. What might change or how you feel you may be impacted and so recognizing that and understanding it is always a really strong starting point as you're considering this. And then finally, the divergence around values and themes. Where the community engagement sentiments of conflicting community interest and what things need resolution. So population balance, keeping that while not splitting the neighborhoods, understanding which map reduces the chances we inadvertently engage in asset packing. Recognizing how to avoid creating a structure that solidifies divisions versus, um, as stated earlier, the value of promoting collaboration. Um, and that's probably going to, that could be care, that could be double, double down if continuing to characterize the east and west as separate communities. And then thinking, is there a map design that best recognizes renters as community of interest? And then all of these bringing together, really emphasizing, um, that there's one Portland and that Portland itself is a community of interest. So. Synthesizing those themes, are there any other? Is that resonating? Certain thing to add? Um, any other thoughts? You want to add before we kind of like, really prepare to move into the more focused kind of mapping iterations next week? I'll just say, I really think you synthesized a lot of information in a very short amount of time. And I think you're trying to really understand, you're clearly processing many, many thoughts and ideas, but I, I think you're really understanding kind of where one another are. And also, this is probably a really strong foundation to really move into that, that next phase around refinement. So, uh, I'll give you, come maybe a tough on that one, and it's been a lot of work and just wanted to recognize it too.
Autumn?
Was that?
Siegel.
Commissioner Siegel, sorry, are you standing up again?
Yes, you know, it's just a, I didn't know where to stick this question, so I'll stick it here. Uh, with regard to the, uh, very real concern of asset packing. Uh, again, I, I know I've said this before, that we've got some consultants that have done a lot of districting and redistricting. And it might be good to, uh, maybe hear from them or have it filtered in some way, so we don't have a big presentation on it. But how have they dealt with that concern or that, uh, real or imagined? In the past, and have they any particular, do they have any words of advice for us, given what they know about what we're doing?
But, we add to that. Cause there's, there's the act of consolidating assets into a single district. And then there's the act of, uh, what's the best way to manage assets, right? And I, I, those questions, while they related are.
Very different.
Very different, right?
Yeah.
And so I, I think it's, we, we talked about that. It's really good to understand that distinction because uh, one of the things that, that's been made clear is that what we are attempting to do is an opportunity. But bringing that opportunity into fruition, uh, is, is beyond us, right? And that's where, uh, elections and community collaborations and, uh, priorities setting by these communities and neighborhood associations and so forth. Needs to sort of make sure that the, uh, elected are held accountable to do those things, right? And so I think as we, we asked Flo and the consultants about that, uh, that again, that's one of the themes that we should be looking forward to, to say, look, this is an opportunity for us, but, uh, what's necessary to make this opportunity equitable for Portland as a whole, right?
Next, good for lessons learned moving forward as well.
Thank you, and I don't want to put Flo on the spot, but we can follow up on the best, the best approach to kind of address that, if it's a memo or a short presentation, we'll, we'll circle up on. Uh, Commissioner Valdini.
Just to follow up on that, um, a few people in my neighborhood asked me for more information on asset packing because I brought it up in the neighborhood meetings. So I've been doing some extra gathering of, uh, research and I'm happy to, I, um, went back to Common Cause, which is an organization in LA that did a, did a presentation for us a few months ago. And I have the recording of that, if anyone wants it, and also have a, a really, um, I've got interesting article from the LA Times that deals with, uh, when the city of LA had some asset packing questions and issues. And while we're very different from the city of LA, I just thought it was an interesting example. So, um, I'm happy to share those resources, if that would be valuable, but I echo, you know, more information on this, the better. If Flo can tell us things as well, that would be great.
Wonderful. Um, and I know you said that you wanted, you almost gave a lecture at one of the sessions. It was really, really helpful. Alright, so Commissioner Ben Sickle Robins.
Well, just to follow on with what Flo might be able to help us with, um, we got a lot of questions from folks who, um, wanted to know about the data sets we were looking at, what kinds of things we were considering. And clearly, the tables that were on each of the maps from Districtor weren't adequate for helping them kind of, uh, assess, um, equities and representation opportunities and things. And so I'm wondering if Flo could share examples with us of how they've, um, crafted the rationale and the statistical support for, um, a map, um, in the past. What additional things they've, they've, uh, not really scored, but basically looked at across each district in terms of, uh, how it's, uh, achieving that opportunity for representation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Kimmy, I saw you come on camera, any, okay. We'll circle up, we'll circle back. Okay, so we are, we are timed, but I did want to do a quick check-in around interest in joining a mapping work group. Um, and that work group would meet, I think it's Monday or Tuesday, Sophia, not Monday and Tuesday. So, is there interest right now for specific commissioners who'd like to join the work group? And if you do, would you be able to raise your, raise your hands? Okay. Taking notes, I see Commissioner Valdini, Manhadas, Wise, Judd, Ben Sickle Robbins, Kamora, Laurenti.
And, do we, we, I think we asked Kari this question.
Yeah, uh, Kari didn't respond though. We should follow up.
I don't think he's here.
No, he's at his sister's wedding, but we did ask him that question.
You asking, you volunteer, and I'll just, uh, alright, so I think I've got everyone, and if I didn't, Sophia, I think you got it too, right?
Yeah, I think we got it in the notes. I, I guess the only follow-up is what day works better, is it Monday or Tuesday for folks?
I could do either.
I would prefer Tuesday, but I could cancel something on Monday if necessary.
I could do Tuesday.
And to be clear, uh, we're planning, it was planned for the evening. Starting at six.
I think either day could work for me.
Tuesday?
Say again?
Uh, it was, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wise, you said Tuesday?
I said either day could work. I could.
Either day.
I think either day worked.
Perfect. Alright, so we've got, we've got the volunteers. If any other commissioners would like to join the work group and find that it can work with their schedule, please connect with Sophia. And we'll just confirm that that Tuesday time is going to be the one that is, it's probably going to be, unless unless there is a, unless there's availability Monday. I believe Commissioner Manhadas, you had a potential conflict. We'll circle up and do the confirmation there. And just so you know, the next meeting will be a hybrid meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August ninth, from six to nine PM. Uh, meeting materials will come two days before the meeting and they'll also be posted online. Okay. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Great work.